Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the inaugural meeting of the Richmond Board of Education. My name is Scott Robinson. I am the Superintendent of Schools with the Richmond School District. This evening, I will be acting as the meeting chairperson until the trustees elect are sworn in and the board chair is elected. At this time, I would like to invite Elder Shane Point from Musquiam to provide a welcome to the traditional territory.
I want to start by first saying thank you. First, saying thank you to the leadership for inviting me here today. It's an honor and a privilege for me for you to be with you, the invited guests of these wonderful luminaries. In the chant, I'm asking the infinite to please lift up, lift up their hearts, Thala, in our language, lift up their hearts, Sali, in our languages, to lift up their hearts and their spirits. Provide them with the strength that they need for the task at hand. I'm also saying to the infinite, please bless all of the children that they're going to look after during their terms as leaders. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your meaningful words, Elder Shane. We're certainly honored by your presence here this evening. And we're grateful and humbled to be here with you on these beautiful lands. As we continue our journey of truth and reconciliation, these moments are very important to us as a school district. And we thank you for this opportunity to learn from your wisdom, and we look forward to the honoring ceremony later on tonight's agenda. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the trustees elect this evening. Rod Beliza, Ken Hamaguchi, Heather Larson, Donna Sargent, Debbie Tobolotny, Alice Wong, and David Yang, as well as their family and friends and everyone in the gallery this evening. We're all very pleased that you can be here to join us to witness this very special occasion. At this time, I would now like to introduce the RC Palmer Choir, consisting of students in grades nine through 12, as well as their director Iris Chan. The choir meets after school twice a week to practice. And to commemorate Remembrance Day, they will be performing "In Flanders Fields" by Eleanor Daily. They will also be performing at the Senetaph on Friday, November 11th. Please join me in welcoming the RC Palmer Choir. So I'll now call the meeting back to order. Would the Secretary Treasurer please read the results from the October 15th, 2022 election?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. As per Section 146 of the Local Government Act, the Chief Election Officer has declared the following candidates elected after receiving the highest number of valid votes in the October 15th, 2022 election. Ken Hamaguchi, Donna Sargent, Alice Wong, Heather Larson, Debbie Tobolotny, David Yang, and Rod Beliza. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Secretary Treasurer. At this time, I would ask the Secretary Treasurer and the Deputy Superintendent to please come forward to administer the oath of office for the elected trustees.
So at this time, I'll be calling each trustee-elect to come forward to make the oath. And you have a choice to state the oath of the office or the oath of solemn affirmation. And according to Section 50 of the School Act, the oath of allegiance is optional. Go ahead.
Good day.
Yeah, please go ahead.
I, Rodolfo Basques Beliza, a school trustee elected for school district number 38 Richmond, do swear that I am qualified to hold office as a trustee in school district number 38 Richmond and meet the trustee qualification requirements set out in the School Act. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the School Act respecting vote buying, intimidation, or other election offenses in relation to my school, to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the School Act, and I will faithfully perform the duties of my office. And I will not allow any private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the School Act that relate to conflict of interest. And in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of pecuniary and indirect pecuniary interest in a matter. Dated this day, Wednesday, November 9, 2022.
Thank you, trustee Beliza, and congratulations.
Trustee Beliza, you can now take your seat at the table as a formally appointed oath trustee. Thank you.
So now I'd like to call trustee-elect Ken Hamaguchi. Please come forward to perform the oath.
I, Kenneth Kassigi Hamaguchi, a school trustee elected for school district number 38 Richmond, do swear that I am qualified to hold office as a trustee in school district number 38 and meet the trustee requirement or qualification requirements set out in the School Act. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the School Act respecting vote buying, intimidation, or other election offenses in relation to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the School Act, and I will faithfully perform my duties, duties of my office, and I will not allow any private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the School Act that relate to conflict of interest. And in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of pecuniary and indirect pecuniary interest in a matter.
Congratulations, trustee Hamaguchi. So now I'd like to call trustee-elect Heather Larson to come forward to make the oath.
Hi, Heather Ann Elizabeth Larson, a school trustee elected for school district number 38 Richmond, do swear that I am qualified to hold office as a trustee in school district number 38 Richmond and meet the trustee qualification requirements set out in the School Act. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the School Act respecting vote buying, intimidation, or other election offenses in relation to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the School Act, and I will faithfully perform the duties of my office. And I will not allow any private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the School Act that relate to conflict of interest. And in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of pecuniary and indirect pecuniary interest in a matter.
Congratulations, trustee Larson. Now I'd like to call trustee-elect Donna Sargent to come forward to make the oath.
I, Donna Grace Sargent, a school trustee elected for school district 38 Richmond, do swear that I am qualified to hold office as a trustee in school district 38 Richmond and meet the trustee qualifications requirements set out in the School Act. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the School Act respecting vote buying, intimidation, or other election offenses in relation to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the School Act, and I will faithfully perform the duties of my office. And I will not allow any private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the School Act that relate to conflict of interest. And in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of pecuniary and indirect pecuniary interest in a matter.
Congratulations, trustee Sargent. Now I'd like to call trustee-elect Debbie Tobolotny to come forward to make the oath.
Hi, Deborah Ann Tobolotny, a school trustee elected for school district number 38 Richmond, do swear that I am qualified to hold office as a trustee in the school district number 38 Richmond and meet the trustee qualification requirements set out in the School Act. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the School Act respecting vote buying, intimidation, or other election offenses in relation to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the School Act, and I will faithfully perform the duties of my office. I will not allow any private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the School Act that relate to conflict of interest. And in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of pecuniary interests and indirect pecuniary interests in a matter.
Please go ahead.
The oath of allegiance. I, Deborah Ann Tobolotny, of Richmond, B.C., a school trustee elected in the province of British Columbia, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and his heirs and successors.
Thank you, and congratulations, trustee. Now I'd like to call trustee-elect Alice Wong to come forward to make the oath.
I, Alice Sauley Wong, a school trustee elected for school trustee number 38 Richmond, do swear that I'm qualified to hold office as a trustee in school district number 38 Richmond and meet the trustee qualification requirements set out in the School Act. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the School Act respecting vote buying, intimidation, or other election offenses in relation to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the School Act, and I will faithfully perform the duties of my office. And I will not allow my private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the School Act that relate to conflict of interest. And in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of pecuniary and indirect pecuniary interest in a matter. Ophelia, let's see. I, Alice Sauley Wong, of Richmond, B.C., a school trustee elected in the province of British Columbia, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, his heirs and successors. So help me God.
Congratulations, trustee Wong. Now I'd like to call trustee-elect David Yang to come forward to make the oath.
I, Xiaobo Yang, a school trustee elected for school district number 38 Richmond, do solemnly affirm that I am qualified to hold office as a trustee in school district number 38 Richmond and meet the trustee qualification requirements set out in the School Act. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the School Act respecting vote buying, intimidation, or other election offenses in relation to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the School Act and will faithfully perform the duties of my office. And I will not allow any private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the School Act that relate to conflict of interest. And in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of pecuniary and indirect pecuniary interest in a matter.
Congratulations, trustee Yang. So, Mr. Superintendent, this is the end of the oath of office.
Thank you, Secretary Treasurer. I would ask that the audience please join me in congratulating the newly inaugurated Richmond Board of Education. I would now like to call on the Secretary Treasurer, Cindy Wang, to be appointed as Returning Officer, and Deputy Superintendent Rick Ryan as scrutineer for the election of the board chairperson, vice-chairperson, and provincial council representatives. Thank you. Would the Secretary Treasurer please distribute nomination ballots for the position of board chairperson? So while the Secretary Treasurer and Deputy Superintendent are counting the ballots, I'd like to take this opportunity to share some of the great things that have been happening around this district over the past month since our last board meeting in October. So pumpkin learning. During the fall, classrooms are often very busy connecting pumpkins with their learning. And this fall has been no exception. Recently, students at Mitchell Elementary School were asked to consider the question, what are you grateful for? During their gratitude pumpkin activity. After some classroom and students use pumpkin art to brighten up their classroom as well. They explore the use of colors, light, and shadow to create beautiful pieces of art that they could hang on their school walls. Students at Blundell Elementary were recently encouraged to explore digital learning by using a BeBots coding kits offered by the District Resource Center. BeBots are classroom bee-shaped robots with controls to move forward by by students who have programmed them. Some students chose to make a maze for their BeBots, while others decided to create movement codes to mimic the dances of honeybees. Students found that they needed to revise and retest their BeBots to achieve their final goals. And this activity provided many entry points for students and the opportunities to communicate and collaborate with their peers. I am going to pause my presentation there. Would the Secretary Treasurer please read the results of the nomination for the position of chairperson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Trustee Tobolotny has been nominated for the chairperson of the board. So I would like to ask trustee Tobolotny, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So at this point, I declare trustee Tobolotny as elected by acclamation to be the chairperson of the board for one-year term. Congratulations.
This is the shortest chairmanship I've ever had in my life. This is the shortest chairmanship I've ever had in my life.
Well, thank you, everyone, my colleagues, for the faith you've had in me to elect me chair. And so the meeting now continues, and I look forward to the next year working with everyone. We come to now agenda item number seven, election of the vice chairperson. And would the Secretary Treasurer please distribute the nomination ballots for the position of vice chairperson?
Sure. Thank you, chairperson.
Chairperson, with your permission, I'll continue with my presentation. So recently, students at Tomsett Elementary completed a lovely collaborative art piece of Vincent van Gogh's Sunflowers. Students used their observation skills to recognize the numerous details in the famous painting, including the subject and the mood. They then worked collaboratively with pastels to make their very own sunflower mural. It's just beautiful. Breaker Robotics at Burnett Secondary is a student-run robotics club that will be competing in the 2023 Robotics Competition. The competition will help extend their knowledge of engineering, construction, problem-solving, communications, media management, fundraising, finance, and more. The team recently attended a tour at KPU's Wilson School of Design to learn more about engineering. Through this insightful experience, new ideas were generated and new connections were built. The team is also dedicating their time to welcoming and training junior members for the upcoming season of the competition. French immersion students at Dixon Elementary are working on building their French vocabulary and oral language skills. They've been busy creating and telling stories based on the characters found in a Foxy and Friends novel. They have worked hard to develop narratives through writing, and they have focused on using French sounds to label the objects in their drawings. The students are doing a great job of exploring the French language to develop many creative stories. And intermediate classes at McNeely have been exploring big ideas of inequity and social justice by taking part in this year's Global Read-A loud Day. Students have been deeply engaged with the book Thirst by Varsha Bajaj, and they are looking forward to being together for the upcoming book celebration in the library learning commons. Throughout the school year, they'll have many more opportunities to engage with these themes as the school's library learning columns, commons, will be further exploring equity, diversity, identity, and belonging. And personal learning time is a timetable structure in all our secondary schools that provides students with an opportunity to reflect and set goals for their learning, develop, develop develop their independence. At Canby Secondary, students are receiving academic support, catching up on missed work, collaborating with peers in group projects, connecting with friends, being physically active, creating see our PLT functioning so well in our, in our secondary schools. Wonderful. And finally, there's a gardening project at Grauer Elementary School. Students in the blended learning program at Grauer Elementary have chosen their own seeds to grow in the class aeroponic garden tower. Over the coming weeks, students will observe their seeds and learn about plant reproduction, leaf design diversity, where green food comes from, and sustainability. The young gardeners are looking forward to the harvesting of their, their plants. And some students would like to enjoy the fruits of their labor, while others have asked to donate the produce to others, such as the food bank. And what a great multi-project there. Wonderful. Chairperson, I'll turn it back over to you.
Hey. With the Secretary Treasurer, are you ready to read the results of the election for vice chairperson?
Uh, thank you, chairperson. So trustee Larson and trustee Wong have been nominated for the vice chairperson of the board. So let me ask the question, trustee Larson, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. And trustee Wong, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, Secretary Treasurer, could you, we'll have to move to a ballot then. So can you distribute the ballots for vice chairperson?
Yeah, for sure.
While they're counting the ballots, do you have any more? You have completed your presentation. Uh, yes, well, our strategic plan was adopted in, I believe it was December twenty twenty. In it, within it, there are five goals and many other objectives within the plan. Staff have been working very diligently on all those goals. And at the last meeting of the, the previous board, we had presentations on the achievements so far regarding that plan. And it was just an absolutely amazing plan. And, and the presentations were fantastic. It made for a long meeting, but it went by fast because there were some many very, very wonderful achievements. And our, all our schools, it's becoming a real collective of work between all our senior staff and our administrators and individual schools. And as trustees, we're very proud of this plan. And it's going to be fantastic to continue the work moving forward over the next four years. So stay tuned, folks, because there'll be lots more presentations from our superintendent. Thank you. Are you, Secretary Treasurer, are you ready to present?
Uh, thank you, chairperson. Trustees Larson have received the most, the highest number of votes. So therefore, I declare trustee Larson is elected to be the vice, vice chairperson of the board.
Uh, congratulations, trustee Larson. And thank you to trustee Wong for accepting the nomination. Okay, so now we move on to item number eight, which is our elect provincial in that we also look for an alternate representative in case the council representative cannot attend the meetings that are planned for provincial council. And these are interim meetings where advocacy is done on the part of trustees. Where a representative for provincial council. Okay, trustee Larson and trustee Yang. So we will need a representative and an alternate. Is there agreement that one will represent and one will alternate, or should we move to a ballot?
I'm, I'm happy to represent.
And I'm happy to alternate.
Okay, well, it looks like we have a representative and an alternate, and that's fantastic. I know you'll enjoy those. And congratulations to you both. Okay. Also, now we will move to uh, election of the B.C. employers' association representative and an alternate representative. And I'm looking for interest in those positions. Uh, trustee sergeant. Okay. Is there anyone interested in being an alternate for trustee sergeant? If not, I could step forward as an alternate. Okay, so congratulations, trustee sergeant. There are some very important meetings and decisions that are coming up for that as well. BCPC is our, is our uh, employers' association that represents the board of trustees across the province. Thank you. Congratulations. We're moving on to agenda item number ten, the destruction of ballots. So I will need to get a motion, and I can read the motion first, that the ballots for the offices of chairperson of the board, vice chairperson of the board, BCSA representative, and BCPC representative be destroyed. So trustee Yang, you're moving, and trustee sergeant second. And I'm calling question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. An agenda number so according to policy two oh one bylaw, I will need you to notify me which committee you're interested in, trustees, and what you're interested in serving on. By November sixteenth, those appointments need to be made. And the appointments will be announced in December. And committees, the committee members will assume their duties for one year. So you will be sitting on those committees. And also for liaison assignments, there'll be something sent around for the list of schools. And we'll figure out the school liaison assignments as well. Thank you. Okay, and next on the agenda is some business, the authorized signatories. According to policy two oh one bylaw, the board will authorize its signing authorities as set out in policy six oh three point five point one and policy six oh three point five point one R for the ensuing, ensuing year, ensuing year at the inaugural meeting. So the motion states that the Board of Education of School District Thirty-eight approve the following signing authorities. And until they are so changed, shall be the board chairperson, which would be myself, and the secretary treasurer Cindy Wang, except for the issuance of checks when the required signatures shall be any one of the board chairperson, Debbie Tablotny, board vice chairperson, Heather Larson, superintendent Scott Robinson, and any of the secretary treasurer Cindy Wang, Assistant Secretary Treasurer Maria Foo, and manager financial services Pramod Chuan. And such signatures may be affixed by hand or by check writing fax machine in accordance with established board policy. So I'm looking for mover, trustee sergeant. And seconder is trustee Larson, and all those in favor? And any opposed? No. Oh, that motion is carried. Thank you. And the interesting part, honoring ceremony by elder Shane Point. Next, so I'd like to invite trustees to come up and receive blessings from elder Shane. Yeah, so everybody, if everyone, I guess, can gather around here.
I want to say to you in our own families and houses, when we ask our relatives to come forward in the leadership position, what we do is we blanket them because you're going to work for children and their best interests in terms of education. I'm going to place the blanket over your right shoulder to the left, and you'll, you'll hold it. That signifies for us that you're going to work. And for you, that you're accepting a responsibility for children, their educations. On these really wonderful blankets, one of our artists from Musquiam, Deborah Sparrow, created the design. It's a wolf. Unlike our relatives from other places in the world, our view of wolf is very different. Wolves for us represent family. They represent balance. They represent teamwork. They represent all of the kindness that each adult has for pups and that pups have for the adults. We don't view them as vicious. We don't view them as violent. We view them as family. So when you bring these home or wherever you decide to keep them, know that the people from Musquiam have recognized that you've accepted responsibility and that we support you one hundred percent in what it is you're going to do for all students within the district. What's auspicious for me is that this month, November, full moon has just passed. In its description, it's called the November Beaver Full Moon. Auspicious in the sense that you not only wolves, but beavers. Beavers in our belief system not only work hard and create, but they change the environment and the ecosystem within. They're the only animal that does that. When they begin to work to dam creek or river, they change vast tracts of land. You new leaders get to change the educational environment for the children of Richmond. You get to do that. That's absolutely wonderful. I worked in education for thirty-four years. Children K to twelve, absolutely the most rewarding time in my life. So I want to say to you, congratulations on behalf of the people from Musquiam whose territory you work and live in. I want to say thank you very much. Please accept this blanket as a reminder for yourself of the work that you need to do during your tenure as a leader, the school district. during your tenure as a leader, the school district. I want you all to know that I'm very happy for you and I'm very proud of you for taking time away from your families to help others, especially children. I hope that your families know and understand the work that you're going to do for children is of the utmost importance, and they honor you and the responsibility that you've accepted. Historically and now we have weavers within our families. Historically, I don't know really how long it took for our mothers, our grandmothers and our aunties to actually make the blankets. We called them Suwua. They harvested their male relatives, went into the mountains and harvested the wool from the mountain sheep. They didn't, they didn't kill mountain sheep. They went and they gathered what was on the bushes and the ground. So don't know really how long it took to weave. And then, of course, the designs. So any of us historically as well as now, when we receive a blanket, we know and understand the industry that happened to make the blanket. So within our families and our communities, they're true treasure. All of the love that our grandmothers, aunties, moms, older sisters wove into those blankets, they wove love. They wove respect into them. When they were given, the receiver knew that they're receiving treasure and that they had a responsibility, not only to take care of that blanket, but to remember why they received it. And it's because they're leaders. And they're leaders within the family and the community of good standing. I want you to know, was an honor for me today to witness you new ones. Was an honor for me to witness you accepting responsibility. It always moves me when I hear people swear an oath to office to be the best human being they can be in the moment, for children especially. I want to say to the two ladies who read the additional and swearing oath to the new king. That's wonderful for me to hear that. So I want to say to you, please, Siwum, 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 Timethet. Timethet, Siem. Suwuan. Saas, Saas Squalowin. Stackwith. I'm saying to you, please, please, leaders, please, lift up the hearts and the minds of children so that they can prosper and become wonderful citizens of Richmond. Hitzapgasiem. Hichka, hichka, hichka.
Okay. Elder Name Point. On behalf of the Richmond Board of Trustees and staff, we'd like to thank you for your welcome, your acknowledgement, and honoring our new trustees to the Board of Education this evening. It's been very wonderful. We're honored by your presence and message, and we'd like to thank you with a small gift of preserves that has been made, especially for you from our local blackberries, sign of our desire to connect with the land and to share in our gratitude to the Musquiam Nation for your friendship. We hope to honor this connection as we all work towards uh, learning truth and reconciliation on behalf of the generation today and those to come. May your journey home this evening be safe.
Thank you.
Wonderful blackberry.
Most wonderful. Blackberry toast tomorrow morning. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Nobody.
So.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do your best, young man. Thank you. Do your best. Thank you. Your best, sir.
On that very special note, this concludes our meeting. But as we all know, uh, trustees, uh, we make our decisions as a group of seven. So I will need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Uh, moved by Trustee Larson and seconded by Trustee Wong. I, and a show of hands, all those in favor? I mean, with an extra. And is there anybody opposed? Okay, uh, motion is carried, and I just want to thank everybody for coming. It was a wonderful event and so special with Elder Point here to, to, uh, make it just such a wonderful evening. So thank you all for coming. Now we can see our family members that were emote to support us. Thank you.
Do I'll exploit? Are you related?